I'd like to call to order the July 5th, 2011 meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to order. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have Mr. Bobby Henley is here to deliver invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Let us pray, please. Lord, first of all, we thank you tonight for Jesus Christ and all that was accomplished through his death, burial, and resurrection and the blessed hope we have. We also want to thank you tonight, Lord, for that blessed rain that you gave us. Lord, the crops look entirely different, and we thank you for those type of blessings. We also want to thank you tonight for these seven people that you've chosen to sit here and rule this county, and we ask that you bless them, Lord. We also ask that you bless their staff. For the governor of this state and her staff, Lord, we ask that you continue to strive with them. For the president of our country tonight, Lord, and all of his staff and his people, Lord, we ask that you intervene in their lives, that you give them instruction, that you give them comfort, that you give them wisdom and understanding, and we'll be careful to give you the praise and the honor and the glory. Lord, I'm concerned about our country because there are so many things that have gone wrong. First John tells us that "the lust of the eye and the lust of the flesh and the pride of life" are the three things that will bring this country down. And, Lord, it looks like we're well on our way. So we ask, Lord, that you use your influence. Just yesterday, Lord, we celebrated this country, the establishment of this country on your principles, Lord. So we ask that you turn this country back to your principles. We thank you for tonight. We ask your presence. We ask everything be done in decency and order, and we'll be careful to give you the praise, the honor, and the glory for all that's accomplished, for it's in that mighty and precious name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Henley.
Okay. At 6:00 PM this afternoon, we had a work session to discuss the Maple Airport overlay district. Next is approval of the agenda. I have two changes I'd like to make to tonight's agenda. The first, have an addition to the consent agenda for a member and of agreement provision for health insurance benefits for qualified retirees of Almarl Mental Health and Tideline Mental Health. Also, I'd like to add a closed session to consult with our attorney at the end of our meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have it. Thank you. Next is our public comment period. This is a time to hear comments from the public on items of interest that are not appearing on tonight's agenda. Would ask that you would limit your comments to three minutes, and Mr. McCree, our distinguished attorney, will be our timekeeper. Didn't have anyone signed up, so does anyone have anything they would like to say? Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Josh. Mr. Josh Bass, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm Josh Bass, President of the Currituck Chamber of Commerce, and I come to you tonight just to thank you for all of your support that you as a board gave us at the Ace Hardware ribbon cutting and grand opening down in Grandy. There were several commissioners there, a lot of county staff. It was a great turnout. It's great to have that facility in Lower Currituck, but we appreciate all the county support that we got for that event. We also have a ribbon cutting coming up next week on the 13th, Wednesday, at noon at Almarl Home Healthcare, which is a new business opening here in Currituck. So it's good to see all these new businesses opening, and so hopefully we will see lots of y'all out at that event as well. But thank you for all the support you gave us at Ace.
Thank you, Josh. Next.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say something if I may. Last night, I went over to Whalehead Club. Commissioner Gilbert went along with me, hopefully to watch the fireworks, but Mother Nature put on a better fireworks show than what we could do. But I just wanted to commend Diane Nordstrom and her staff, Sheriff Susan Johnson, Chief Rob Glover of EMS, and all their employees and volunteers that went over there and worked. Up till the rains came in, it was quite an event, one of the best ones, I think, that we've had over there. And I talked to the county manager, and I understand that the fireworks will be rescheduled for a later date, so there will be a fireworks show at the Whalehead Club sometime before the summer's out.
That's correct.
So we'll give ample notice of when that is, and maybe we'll have another grand old party over there. So, but I just think everybody needs to be appreciated for what they did, because it was going well up till the rainfall. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further comments? Hearing none. Item number three is certificate of appreciation for Mr. Paul O'Brien, our interim superintendent of schools. Mr. O'Brien, I'll ask you to meet me up here, and I'll ask the wrestling board to please come along with me, if you would, please.
Very good certificate.
Uh-oh. Certificate's okay.
That's above my pay grade, Mr. Chairman.
We'll get there. Most of you know, Mr. O'Brien has been an interim superintendent for Currituck County Public School Systems for the last two, three months, and he's done a very good job, and we would like to give him the certificate of appreciation and grateful recognition of your dedication and service as interim superintendent of Currituck County Public Schools. We hereby present Paul O'Brien with this certificate of appreciation on this fifth day of July 2011, signed by myself. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Over to us.
Thank you. Just going on Facebook? No.
Oh.
We have strict rules about that. Although this would be if it was public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and rest of the board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm Sandy Kinzel. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Currituck County Schools, and it's been a pleasure to work with Mr. O'Brien and these fine ladies here. We are truly blessed in Currituck County to have dedicated and talented teachers and staff members to provide our students across the county with high-quality educational opportunities and experiences, both inside the classroom and outside. I'm here this evening with two such dedicated educators, and it is a pleasure for me to introduce Teresa Brinkley and Crystal Schultz, who helped to coordinate the project graduation that you so generously helped to support, and they're here this evening to help provide you with a little peek into what you helped to support. So, thank you.
We thank you and the ladies that are with you for the time and interest that you put in to make Currituck a better place and to help our kids grow and learn and become better adults. So, thank you. The thanks goes to you.
Thank you. It takes a team, so thank you for your support.
Does Lady make some comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for your generosity. It was a great evening. It was our first year that we coordinated it, so we weren't sure exactly what we were in for, but it was an incredible night. It was a long night. I stayed awake the whole time. I was real excited, but it was so fun. We can't wait to do it next year, but we wanted to share what a great time was with you, so we created a video to show you the highlight of the evening, as well as, you know, in the end, other businesses that were involved in our community to make this event happen.
Okay. Please. Okay. Here we go. Very nice.
Again, we would like to thank you all for your continued support and our community members for their support as well, and it made an eventful and wonderful evening.
How many students altogether participated in the event?
About 68.
That's good. Good.
Hopefully, more next year.
You guys wore them out, because the next morning, when I arrived for graduation, they were worn out. Thank you.
But again, again, thank you for all that you do, and we certainly appreciate it. Item number five, public hearing in action, PB 08-03, Backwoods Hideaway, request for preliminary plat special use permit for 16 lots located on Northwest Backwoods Road, approximately 1.4 miles north of the intersection with South Mills Road, tax map three, parcels 3A, Moyoc Township. Mr. Woody, I guess you will be...
Good evening. My name is Derek Dell.
I need to swear y'all in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Anyone else who wants to speak to this also needs to be sworn, so... Raise your right hand, please. Again, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. You are all sworn. Mr. Woody, I will open the session and public session, and we can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a special use permit for a preliminary plat subdivision. As you alluded to, the property is located off Northwest Backwoods Road, about a mile and a half north of the intersection with South Mills Road. And just to point out real quickly, the subdivision itself is part of a much larger tract. The entire tract is highlighted in blue on the map. Then you see a red circle that's centered near Northwest Backwoods Road. That's where the actual subdivision is located, and that tract of land will be cut out from this larger tract. So I just want folks to be clear that we're not talking about lots on this entire tract. We're talking about lots on 54 acres of this larger tract. Property's currently zone agricultural, as is all the property in that area of the county. Generally, what you have there is either undeveloped land that's adjacent or some scattered single-family residences in close proximity. 2006 land use plan designates this area as conservation. In the Moyoc sub-area, again, it's a 54-acre site. The subdivision before you tonight proposes 16 lots with access coming off Northwest Backwoods Road. There is no county water in this part of the county, so utilities are private water, wells, and on-site septic systems. And I'll note also that this is agriculturally zoned, so the minimum lot size is three acres, but developers are allowed to cluster the lots, or that is, to create smaller lot sizes. In exchange, they increase the size of open space. So you've got 12 of the lots here. They're taking advantage of that, and they're smaller, but of course, they've had to add a requisite amount of acreage into open space. This is a special use permit. Your criteria and findings of fact, or suggested findings of fact, are located in the case analysis. I'm not going to read through each of those, but if you have questions, I can certainly answer those. The technical review committee or the staff that reviews these subdivision plans has reviewed this particular request. The TRC recommends approval, subject to some minor plan corrections that are listed in the staff report. Planning staff has also recommended this request, and we too recommend approval. Staff is recommending one condition be added, that all the open space excluding recreational amenities and stormwater infrastructure be retained by the developer and placed into a conservation easement. What that will do is, in the areas adjoining these lots, you'll have an area of land that remain forested and won't be able to be timbered, so you won't have, hopefully won't have negative impacts on these future home buyers through timbering or other things that are in close proximity. The planning board also heard this request at their last meeting. During that meeting, they voted to recommend approval on a six-two vote. They did add one condition, that where interconnectivity is proposed at the front and back of the development, that it be noted on the lots that there may be future developments. What that means is, within this development tract, you see there's future roads or streets that are stubbed into adjoining parcels, and that means at some point, if those adjoining parcels develop, we'll be able to have connectivity between this subdivision and other subdivisions. And of course, the planning board's recommending that it be noted on these plats, so when you buy the lot, you're not surprised one day when your road connects to another subdivision. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you have on the subdivision request.
Any questions for Mr. Woody?
I have a question about utilities. Where is the closest county water to this tract?
County water is not down South Mills Road, so it's a significant distance from this tract. I don't have a mileage for you, but it is a significant distance.
Now, I've had a lot of people down that way tell me that they paid for water taps or water bonds 20 years ago and haven't seen anything yet. Why aren't we requiring them to put up a pond for water? You know, obviously, we don't have anything near them and probably not going to in the near future.
The bond requirement covers the county at large. It's, in some respects, a one-size-fits-all requirement, so the intention is that at some point, if water is available to a subdivision, the burden of putting infrastructure in a subdivision falls on the developer, not the homeowners. In this case, the bond's placed, and of course, if water isn't there in three years, it can be converted to a letter of credit, and after a time from that, it can actually be refunded, so it's not a permanent bond.
Kind of my point. It was prominent, there's a folks down there, as I said, 20 years ago, and they haven't seen it yet. It seems like this is getting pretty far out there. I know the point for the reason we did that, but here again, trying to promote some kind of business in Currituck, some kind of development, looks like we're putting everything we can in the way of the people, because this is nothing but a cash outlay required of the applicant until three years, when they can substitute for something else. I just question the logic of this whole process still.
Any further questions?
Isn't that something we just changed? Used to, they had to put cash up, and we just changed it to allow a bond?
They still got to put cash up, and then three years, they can switch it to a bond.
Yeah, I think it was three. Oh, you got to put the cash up for three years? Okay. I thought we changed it where you could put the bond up.
Yeah. How much, this is what, 18 lots, do we see?
Sixteen, or 16, yeah.
16, and how much is the water tab fee? Or the water pipe fee? Let me put it that way. How much cash are they going to have to put up in order to get this thing approved, if we decide to approve it?
I don't know the answer to that.
I just remember the last one we did was eighty-some thousand dollars we'd been sitting on for years.
Yeah.
What is the tap fee right now, Mr. Scanlon?
Well, I don't believe it's the tap fee. I think it's the cost of putting the water, the infrastructure in the subdivision. That's what's required to be bonded.
Okay.
It's water plus 20%.
But it's the cost of putting the lines in.
Thank you.
And that's just within the subdivision and not requiring them to pay. Of course, the county would bear the burden of running the lines to them, should the majority of the owners decide...
That is correct.
Okay. Just a comment.
Anything further? Hearing nothing. We have Tina McCutchen signed up. Please come forward.
Where do I go, Bear?
Yes, please.
Name and address.
Please state your name and address from the record, please.
All right. My name's Tina McCutchen, and I live at 515 Northwest Backwoods Road. Where they're wanting to put this entrance is right across from my bedroom and living room, in front of my house. And unless they put up some big border rocks or something, I really don't want all that traffic coming right at my door. I think there's like three acres right down the road, you know, three houses, and everybody owns about an acre, and nobody owns any land, or, you know, there's like no houses for another half mile, or mile, where they can make another entrance. They're going to come in between the two houses and right in front of my house. And, you know, I have no problem with them building all these houses, they're just, they could put that entrance somewhere else, out over on South Mills Road or down there where there ain't no houses. That's really all I got to say.
Thank you. Any questions from Mrs.?
I want to ask, Mr. Woody, was this raised during the planning board?
No, sir.
This is the first time you've raised this issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I live at 518. I pretty much have the same...
Please, please state your name and...
Scott Kemna. I live at 518 Backwoods Road. Now, she lives across the street, but I live directly beside where this entrance is going, and I'm not sure of the map exactly how many feet they're going to move it over, but you're talking, there's already a pipe and an entranceway where they logged it going through there, and you're probably talking 10 feet from my window. I mean, this, unless, the lot is fairly narrow, but if they are going to put it there, I'd at least like to make sure it's moved as far to the center of that lot. This could be done, because as it stands right now, it looks like I'm going to have cars. I mean, I'll be able to hear the motor running. They'll be right beside it.
You're talking about just the pedestrian traffic, correct?
Yeah, coming in and out, because the edge of my property line is right where that entrance is, and my house is almost to the edge of my property. So I just want to see that they've explored every option, as she did, about how to make the entrance to that neighborhood, because there is more land. Now, I don't know if the same people own the land, different people own the land. I'm not necessarily saying that I'm opposed to the entrance. I just want to know a little more about it and get the maximum amount of room I can, if they are going to put it there.
Thank you. Mr. Woody, has there been any, any meetings that you're aware of between the concerned homeowners and the person who's doing the developing?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Yeah, no, I haven't had any discussion with anyone, other than the letters that came out here recently telling us about the meetings, and then it was postponed and moved back one. I mean, I haven't been contacted. Other than that, you know, so if somebody would at least discuss what the situation is and where it could go, I'd feel a lot better about it.
Mr. Woody?
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Aren't, I'm assuming setbacks are involved here that they meet the criteria?
They are. The access for the property from Northwest Backwoods Road is the only frontage the property has. So you can see where the solid blue line touches Northwest Backwoods Road. That's their access to this property. The property does eventually go down and touch South Mills Road, but due to that being wetlands and environmental conditions, you would, it would be practical to bring a road in from South Mills, so...
What are the setbacks? The gentleman said it was 10 feet. Is that a true number?
There's not a setback for a road from a property line. However, I will note that if you look on the plan, they have centered the road in the middle of that panhandle that comes down, so they've, they've taken the road and put it in the middle. I don't, I don't know the distance of the actual asphalt to the joining property lines without having to scale. Mr. Dell...
He's saying 10 feet to his...
Is it on that, ma'am? I can read it on my computer. I can blow it up enough to see the footage.
Yeah, but he said 10 feet from his window, and, and I'm not doubting what you're saying, but I'm just saying...
The road that's currently there, I'm not necessarily saying that they couldn't move it over farther, because the lot's wider than that, but there's already an entrance there.
Lot's about 155 feet in width. Am I right?
Yes, sir. It's, on the map here, it says 124 feet wide. My name's Derek Dell with Hymen and Ruby. We did put the road into the center of that lot, and it'd be about 62 feet to the center line of the road, so minus 10 feet, 50 foot from the, his property line to the edge of the asphalt.
You say 50 feet from, from his property line to the edge of the road?
Yes.
Is there going to be a ditch in between the road and there?
Please come to the podium. That's, that's how we have to do business. You come to the podium, and you can certainly ask all the questions you would like to ask.
Yeah, I mean, I was curious as whether there was going to be a ditch between the road, and if it did go there, if I was going to be able to connect to that road later on, if I wanted to. Say, I built the garage on my lot on the back end of it. You see what I'm saying? I mean, I'm already going to have the road there. If there's going to be a ditch, can I get a pipe dropped? And I'm, I mean, at least could be able to have some benefit out of this situation. But my main concern was if it is going in there and they have no other way, that it was in the center of that lot. And I couldn't tell by the diagram, or I can't, whether it was going to be right where... And I couldn't tell by the diagram, or I can't, whether it was gonna be right where they have an entrance now from when they logged it, which is right at my property line. There is more room to move it over. But as she's concerned too, when they come out, I mean, lights are gonna be shining directly across the street to her.
If it's centered in the lot now, does that take away her concern as well?
She's on the opposite side of the road.
I'm directly right in front of the whole lot. Sorry, did I miss anything?
Yes, ma'am, please. I understand that.
My whole, all my whole acreage is right in front of that whole lot, and half of his. His house, my, half of my land is in front of his house, and the other half, I'm all over in front of that lot, directly in front of it. There ain't nothing to keep, a couple little trees that will keep anybody from running right into my house, or all the lights, and everybody, all the traffic just going in and out of there.
Mr. Woody, comment again to, I noticed the road is apparently straight coming in and out of there, although there's a spur off going, looks like it's going to the north. That, I assume that may be for connectivity or something later on. My thought would be with the width of the lot there, if it's indeed 124 feet across there, perhaps maybe the road could be made not so straight, so that the traffic going in and out of that would, would maintain a moderate speed by having to make some S-turns. Perhaps also encouraging them to align the road so that it doesn't shine headlights directly into her home or bedroom, to the extent possible with where it is. And if it is going to be right up against the property lines, I'd think some vegetative buffers of some sort might be necessary to protect the adjoining property owners. I think as it is in the middle of the road, that may not be necessary, because 124 feet's a pretty good spread across there. The right of way is not that big, but that does allow enough room to do some S-turns on that entryway, which will slow the traffic down a bit and, and diffuse the lighting issues if need be.
It could be accomplished, and we can add that as a condition of the permit, if the board would like to.
That's not ultimately gonna solve her issue with the lights. From what I understand, you say this is the only access. You had suggested moving it down further, but this is the only access they have onto the road. I think his concerns are addressed by the fact there's gonna be 50-foot buffer between him and his property line, and then you have about a 10-foot setback, so that's 60-foot, and there'll probably be a ditch. So I think his issues are addressed. Hers, I don't, an S or whatever is not going to address the headlights shining towards her house. I don't know how you fix that.
You, you probably can't. The, the one car that's pointing towards Northwest Backwoods Road is, is gonna have to be pretty much perpendicular to the road.
Can, can I ask the engineer a question?
Certainly.
Does he have any intent, the developer, of doing anything on either side of the road?
Right now, we just have swells in place, as far as, I mean, as far as trees or buffer lines. We haven't proposed any at this time.
Well, he could say about 200 feet off the Northwest Backwoods Road, bend the road to the north, and bring it out to where the headlights go by the side of her house. I'm sitting here looking at it on Google Earth, and that could be a possibility where it doesn't take any buffering or anything, but just moves the headlights out of her house. Because I don't think he can do anything with a 60-foot lot on either side, or 30-foot wide lot, so. I know there's a house to the north of hers, so you could hit the headlights in between them.
I'd like to take a look at the angle of which the road will come into Backwoods, if I do that, because there are some safety concerns with.
Right, I understand that.
Turning right and left, looking over your shoulder, if you skew too much.
But if you could just bend it to the north a little bit there.
My thought was sort of too, if they flared it and put a curve entry and a curve exit with something in the way, the cars would not actually be perpendicular north of Backwoods Road. They would actually be turning right or left, going in and there. I know there's no reason to have a turn lane, you know, there's not much traffic up there, and subdivision's certainly not gonna generate enough of it, but it's not really necessary that the cars be directly perpendicular, shining lights across the road. Although, you know, if you got the map, I'm not sure that wouldn't just aggravate it for somebody else, if there's a row of houses on the other side of the street.
There is a lot of traffic on that road. There's a lot of people who uses that road to get from Chesapeake to Camden County. That's the shortcut from Battle, I mean Battlefield to South Mills Road. So there really is a lot of traffic on that road, actually. You wouldn't think it, but there is.
Any further comments?
I would only just, looking at this, with this property, it looks like, where it's encircled in blue there, it looks like there's one, two, three more parcels back in there that could be possibly developed. So we're talking interconnectivity to them right there. If all of those are connected, and there are 16 homes added there, I mean, you're looking at 64 homes, if they keep the same density there, using that one road. So in, looking at the future, it could be a possibility of that many homes there, and you're talking about 125, 130 vehicles would be possible to use it. So I think she has a real concern there exactly, you know, and I don't know what the developer could do, except to move it as far away from her house as possible. But I think it's a concern, a very legitimate concern for her.
Mr. Woody, would it be appropriate to table this and for another two weeks and give the, the engineering firm and the opportunity to look at these concerns and see if they can come back with something that, that will resolve them?
Yes, yes, sir. Staff can certainly work with the applicant.
Ms. Chairman, is your intent to continue the evidentiary phase then of this hearing so that additional evidence may be submitted at that time? I would suggest that that be what you do.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
I think you, like Commissioner O'Neill said, you need to ask the applicant, is it?
Would that satisfy your concerns for now, to have the opportunity to sit down and talk with these folks to see if we can come to some resolution?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ollin?
The applicant, who needs to speak to that as well.
Okay, yes, sir.
Well, if that's what we need to do, then we need to do it. I can sit down and take a look at the way the road comes into the, where our drive directly affects her property, her house, and then come back in two weeks and to give her the best option we can give her.
Thank you.
Mr. Dale, one of the things we recommend generally for permit applications like this is that you have a community meeting with the people that'll be affected prior to bringing the application to us, so that these things come out. Because then you have a chance to look at the problems and, and maybe work out some details beforehand, rather than us rake you over the coals when you get up here.
Do you have anything else?
Not at the moment.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public hearing. I'll ask, is there any discussion?
No, Ms. Chairman, you, let me suggest, you do not want to close the evidentiary phase if you intend to receive additional evidence in two weeks.
Close the evidentiary phase, and we'll receive additional evidence in two weeks.
You do not want to close the evidentiary phase. I think it might be appropriate, if your intent is to continue this for two weeks, entertain a motion to continue this matter until your next meeting.
I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. McCree, keeping it straight. Item number six. Public hearing in action, PBO four.
Mr. Chairman, before you go to that, can I ask exactly what is gonna transpire between now and the next meeting that is going to address concerns?
Would you like to, would you like to come by our office one day? To go over where your house is and how it?
Wouldn't it be better if you came to my house, so you can see exactly where it's at?
Yeah, I can do that, too.
You're off the single shoulder, bud. Right?
I mean, I'd like to meet, too, just so I know what's exactly what's going on. I mean, if they're gonna stake it off, so I can see where it's gonna be at.
Okay.
If you came to my house.
When is a good time for you guys?
Y'all can, y'all can work that out. I would just ask you to set a time and date. And then also, Mr. Woody, if you'll stay involved and kind of facilitate the best we can, and then we'll get this thing moving.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does that satisfy your concern?
Yeah, I just didn't want leaving out there, and then two days before the next public hearing, they still haven't talked.
Item number six, public hearing in action, PBO four dash 15, Shingle Landing Farms' request for an amended preliminary plat, special use permit for 11 lots within Shingle Landing Farms subdivision located in Moayok at 116, 121, 122, 125, and 126 Fox Lane, tax map nine C, parcel three, four, five, six, seven, Moayok Township. Anyone who wants to speak on this, please come forward and be sworn. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got? Thank you. I will now open the public hearing, and Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another request for a preliminary plat, special use permit. This particular property is located on Fox Lane, about 1,300 feet southeast of the intersection of Carritoc Highway and Tolles Creek. And on the map, you can see the original five lots that were platted under the agricultural zoning. This particular property was rezoned earlier, or last year, excuse me, to residential, and I actually will say, as part of that rezoning, they did conduct a neighborhood meeting for this subdivision request. Zoning of the property, as you can see, the subject property is CDR, or residential, and of course, it's surrounded primarily by either general business zoning or other residential zoning districts. The land use plan classifies this area as full service in the Moayok subarea. Size of the site is about 15 acres, and what they've done is taken five lots and reconfigured those into approximately 11 lots, which is consistent with the R zoning district. Property is served by county water in this instance, and individual on-site septic systems. There was a sketch plan approved of this on August 16th of 2010, so this is a follow-up action to that sketch plan approval. The special use permit criteria and staff findings are in your case analysis. I won't review those, but will answer questions if you have any on that information. The TRC has reviewed this case, and the planning staff, and we both, both groups do recommend conditional approval. The one, the one condition that remains on this is that an expired maintenance bond be renewed, and the infrastructure be accepted prior to the HOA maintaining control of that, and prior to the recordation of any, any lots. And that's included in your staff analysis, or in your case analysis, excuse me. The planning board also heard this request at their meeting and recommended unanimous approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Woody? Hearing none. Mr. Miller, would you like to speak?
I introduce myself. I'm Eldon Miller. Good evening to Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Miller? Hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Again, my name's Derek Dale, and I'm here to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Any questions for Mr. Hill? Hearing none. Moving right along. See no opposition. I'll close the public hearing. I'll ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval with the staff's finding of facts and recommendations included in the case analysis.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Item seven, appointment to the senior citizens advisory board. Let me see. I think.
I have an appointment and.
John and Paul.
Okay, John?
We have, I have one application provided by Gwen, so I think Edith Meekins has indicated she'd like to serve on that board. She's resident of the very south end of the County Point Harbor, and I'll make a motion, go ahead and nominate her for that appointment.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Yes, I'd like to appoint Marcy Steele. Marcy lives on Tolles Creek, and I've talked to her. She would be a good addition to this board, and I would like to place her, name and nomination.
Have a nomination? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item number eight, appointment of senior Tarheel legislative delegate and alternate. I sent an email out to everybody last week. I know that Gwen had also sent one to Mrs. Bray. She put a couple names and nomination as well, so. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the, I guess, Ms. Rose and Mrs. DeBello to be our representative to Tarheel State.
Second.
Have a motion? Have a second? All in favor, 65, by saying aye.
Chairman, I have a question on that before you do.
Yes, sir.
I appointed Rosely Rose to the senior advisory board. Is there a conflict with her serving in both capacities?
The board adopted a.
Two, yeah. One, one thing.
Rule that you can only serve on one board.
Would that be in conjunction, too? Pretty much overlaps?
Is it, is it Tarheel, senior Tarheel delegate and advisory board that would be included in that?
Mr. Scanlon, from your interpretation, does it fit the definition of, of what we've done? I know there's been some question about whether the game board fell under that, and some other, some other things. I mean, what's your, Mr. McCree?
I would say it does not fall under your prohibition on serving on more than two county boards or commissions, because indeed, it does relate to county boards and commissions. This is not a county-created board, this is a state-created.
So your legal opinion is that it does not conflict?
Yes, that's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, well, we have a motion in a second.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to recommend to the board that at our next meeting, we ask Edith and Earl Brickhouse to come forward, and we recognize them for their many years of service.
Totally agree.
Senior legislature.
Totally agree. If you would have a plaque made up that we can present to them, I appreciate it, and notify them, and we'll, we'll do that.
Because they were diligent.
Yes, they were. Thank you for the suggestion. Okay, item number nine is consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Commissioners report. Mr. Martin?
Yes, I traveled to Fayetteville over the holidays here, celebrating the Fourth of July yesterday with the dedication of the North Carolina Veterans Memorial, located downtown Fayetteville. Our designated, Roy Davison couldn't be there. He expired earlier in the spring. His hands, however, were on the monument there, along with the other counties from North Carolina and their appointees. His family was there, his children, all five of them, and it was just an absolutely magnificent way to spend the Fourth of July. The governor spoke, as did Senator Kay Hagan and other dignitaries. And I felt proud of serving Carritoc County, and I was certainly glad to go.
Mr. Martin, I am sure you represented us well, and thank you so much for performing that and doing that.
My pleasure, sir.
Mr. Etheridge?
Only thing I'll say is I saw Chairman Martin on a video clip there, so he represented county well.
Mr. O'Neill?
Couple things, Mr. Chairman. I received, well, I'm gonna be brief.
I had a complaint, well, actually, a couple complaints, uh, about the Fourth of July, the Whalehead Basin and ramp was closed. Two people from Carrottock County or from anywhere due to the fireworks. Um, while I understand we don't need boats during the fireworks, I would ask that in the future, we consider the fact that the fireworks are at nine o'clock at night, and we're talking about nobody from early in the day up through the whole day. And I did get some complaints from people on this side that liked to go over to the Whalehead properties on the Fourth of July, and they felt like they were being blocked from going to their own, uh, facility because they usually go by boat. And I would ask that in the future, we at least think about the window maybe not being sixteen hours, you know, from, from daylight till dark, but at least maybe, you know, at say like five o'clock, you have to clean your boats out or something, but that, that did create some heartburn for some people over here on the mainland, so I would like to bring that and ask that that be changed. Another thing I'd like to recognize, he's, he's gone now, but Mr. Eldon Miller III, who was here, took it upon himself to do something that, uh, some of us been trying to get done for, I don't know, four years. He hired somebody, he started at Puddin Ridge Road and went all the way to the stoplight and got those ditches cleaned out. He hired somebody out of his own pocket to clean the ditches out in front of his building and all the way up in front of the church and everywhere, and it looks magnificent. And I think that's the kind of community service we need to be recognizing when, when we have an opportunity to do something like that. And also, if you'll ride by there now, you'll see the railroad ties that the railroad company just throws on the side of their ditch where they fixed the light at Puddin Ridge Road. There's a big pile of railroad ties and everything looks like trash, which, you know, it is. And then along the ditch, along there, you'll see railroad ties where they've just left them now that the grass has been mowed. So I guess about for, about the fifth request to try to get the railroad company to clean their mess up, I don't know why we can't cite them, they're a private company. We cite private citizens all the time, so I don't know why we can't cite them as well for litter. Uh, but I do want to thank Mr. Miller for cleaning that up. It looks really nice and will everybody pay attention when you go through Moayoc. And then lastly, recognition of people that serve on boards. It's been brought to my attention more than once that when somebody serves on a board, we give no recognition for thank you for being on the board. As a matter of fact, I've had one board member call me a couple of weeks ago. No, he didn't call me. He saw me in a restaurant and said he showed up to a meeting, no one had even told him he'd been replaced. He showed up at a meeting and found out he had been replaced at the meeting. So, not only are we not letting them know when their time is up, we're not recognizing people for public service when they serve on these boards for us. Uh, I brought this up, I don't know, two or three meetings ago, but I would like for the manager or the clerk or somebody to draft a policy that we can adopt this uniform that recognizes people for their service in this county.
I asked, I asked the manager a week or so ago to do just exactly that, so, uh, we should be moving along on that. I totally agree with you, and, uh, so I guess we're in the works of doing that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to follow up on something Commissioner O'Neil said, and that was the boat base, and I'd like to have a written explanation of why they closed it.
Yes.
Because Passant County and Elizabeth City, the barge is sitting in the middle of the river, and they got boats all around it as they shoot their fireworks off on the Fourth of July.
That, that boat ramp was closed because last year, we had some boaters came over and left their boats moored there, and the Coast Guard would not let the fireworks show begin until those boats were, owners were identified. Uh, I think the Sheriff's Department spent a tremendous amount of time trying to find and locate the owners of the boats, uh, to the point where they were just about to go ahead and just have them towed out of the area before the owner showed up. Uh, so this year, to try to be preemptive of having boaters that would come over and as they enjoy the festivities, might leave their boat moored there, um, they could disturb the possibility of starting of the, the fireworks show, and that was under the Coast Guard's order.
Isn't there some way that when they bring a boat in, they could check in with the Sheriff's Department and let them know that's their boat and they're on the grounds?
We, we certainly between now and next year can look at the policy and if there's a better way of handling that, but I can tell you, that is why they did it, was because last year, they had unattended boats that were left in the area that the fireworks were being discharged in, uh, to the point where we were, the, the start of that show was being threatened because of location of those boats.
While we're talking about Whalehead, I got a phone call this afternoon, and there's, you know, we're doing everything we can to get the dredging project going and, and that type of stuff, and it seems like every turn that we make, there's a regulatory agency that's, uh, that's keeping us from, from moving forward. I, I would like for, uh, staff, I don't know if it'd be Randall or who, to include something in our next, uh, little magazine piece that we send out to all the homeowners, letting people know just what we are trying to do to get this project moving and, and going forward. I don't think people understand that, and so we're having to be reactive to things where we should be upfront and being proactive and, and, uh, you know, providing information to folks and say, we're, we're doing everything in our power to, to move this thing forward. And, uh, I, I just think it would be a, a good idea, so I would ask that you make that happen.
Can I piggyback one thing to that?
Certainly.
In, in conversations with Congressman Jones, he had told me that he would schedule a meeting with the Colonel of the Corps of Engineers and his staff to discuss this dredging project, and I think we need to take him up on it because we're just getting the run-around on this project. It's an existing, uh, channel that's been there for decades, and if the congressman will, has offered to set a meeting with the Colonel, I think we certainly should take him up on it.
Well, I, I, I totally agree. Uh, I can tell you that, uh, there was a meeting gonna be set up for the road issues in Corova, uh, by Congressman Jones. He was, he told me that he was gonna get in touch with the Colonel and have him attend that meeting. Guess what? No Colonel attended the meeting. Someone else that's, uh, way, way down on the food chain attended that meeting, so I, although I agree with what you're saying, I just don't know how, how much help it will be, but we can certainly travel down that road and see.
I think at the same time, we may want to address the subject of that email that Commissioner O'Neil sent us all about a week ago regarding the fact that the Corps of Engineers is beginning to, uh, make sounds like they're going to take over the drainage ditches. Anything that leads to any tributary...
That's right.
...into any navigable water is gonna become jurisdiction of the Corps of Engineers, so you guys with farmland and ditches are, you know, better beware because we can have some real problems if we don't rein these folks in.
Dan, can we make that letter happen?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Rohr, your comments, please.
I want to welcome some, some new businesses to the county here since, uh, Mr. Bass is still here and appreciate the, the notice about the ribbon cutting coming up for Obix Home Care. Down in that same area there, we've had, actually, I guess it's an affiliate or subsidiary of, uh, the recycling thing, high-tech recycling up here, uh, has opened Big Bucks Recycling down at the end of LeBlur Road, um, which is a big warehouse tender for you folks that are picking up those tin cans, drink cans, bottles, anything else you want to turn in, batteries, uh, should be a great, uh, great moneymaker for you if you've got a little extra time. Right in front of that, the Hedberg's have moved their store, upscale furniture resales, down to the little building in the front of where that is on LeBlur Road. And their place, in the big log cabin out in front of Goose Creek, has opened a sports outfitter. The Grandy Corner Star is now reopened as the duck through, and they told me that they're hoping, they're hoping to get a Dunkin' Donuts there, so deputies don't get too excited yet, but there may be one soon, shortly. And, and one of the really exciting pieces of news, I was riding down Augusta Drive the other day, and got passed by a guy on a surfboard. Now, I don't know if you guys have seen longboards, streetboards, really. This is a giant, uh, I guess, almost like a skateboard, looks like a surfboard, wheels on it and everything, and a guy standing on it pushing himself along with a big kahuna stick, just like the paddleboards that you see out in the, in the surf. And I think this is just absolutely fascinating. I encouraged Commissioner O'Neil to, uh, join me down there, and we'll take a lesson and see if we can't, can't learn how to do this. Uh, it's called the Surf Zone. It's open where the plantation house used to be, right out there in front of the Red Roof Church down there, Church Christ in, uh, Grandy. Surfzone.net is their website, so you might take a look at that. It looks really fascinating, but I really welcome these folks opening a business in the county. I hope you do well, and I encourage everybody to support them as much as you can.
Thank you, Mr. Rohr. Mr. Petrie?
Uh, it was mentioned, I think Commissioner O'Neil mentioned our favorite public utility, not private utility, uh, North Carolina Water. If I'm allowed to say them, um, a big catastrophe Saturday night, um, we were getting phone calls, um, Corolla was out of water. Restaurant, one restaurant in particular had a hundred and ninety reservations. Our county manager stepped up to the plate, had it fixed within the hour, filled up their tank, so I commend, uh, Manager Scanlon on, uh, making everybody look good, and, uh, so I think he did a great job. The second thing is, um, my hearing that the, the, the deal between North Carolina Water and Carrottock County was approved today?
It was approved by Utilities Commission this morning, and now we will move, within the next ten days, we'll schedule a closing date to acquire that system.
Well, I think there'd be a big round of applause in Corolla. Uh, the last thing I'd like to do is, um, when we saw the film of the graduation, I'm going to recommend that we have a work session with the commissioners, uh, at the go-kart racing track and the sumo wrestling. Because you know what? We could settle a lot of stuff. So, anyway, I'd, I'd like to see us pursue that. Um, I've always wanted to be a sumo wrestler, I look like one, but we're gonna give it a whirl. Uh, thank you.
Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate, um, what Commissioner Etheridge said. Um, I attended the events at the Whalehead Club yesterday, and I want to commend the staff, the volunteers, um, the, the gentleman that came out, um, from Charlotte, North Carolina to do parking. Um, the whole event was wonderful until, of course, the, um, Mother Nature, um, rang in and, and took over, but, um, it was an excellent event. Um, the activities with the kids, the watermelon eating contest, just the cornhole, um, it was, you know, the vendors, the food was delicious, so it was just a wonderful Independence Day for me. Um, the additional thing I'd like to add is, um, I had mentioned a fire on Ju- June ninth in Moayoc and admitted, um, a key player, and that was Dan McCarthy with the forestry who's, um, played a huge part in, um, taking care of that situation, so I, I want to, I would be remiss if I didn't mention him, so I wanted to just, um, correct that.
Thank you. Did Owen win the watermelon eating contest?
Um, no, they wouldn't allow him to, to sit up to the table, but, um, there was, um...
Did you participate?
Quite a few folks from the Pennsylvania area. I, I had an opportunity to meet lots of, um, the visitors down there, and they thoroughly enjoyed themselves.
They didn't have a pro division.
But we did have some Carrottockians that were there that, that, you know, showed, um, some grace with, um, the watermelon eating contests.
If I'd had a shirt the same color as my shorts, I could've gotten away with it.
Okay, item number eleven, our managers report. Mr. Scanlon?
Mr. Chairman, first I'd like to thank the board for recognizing the, the various different departments and staff that was involved with the, uh, the whole July fourth celebration. Uh, that is a tremendous planning effort that goes on, and they start, uh, in about a month, they'll start for next year's event and stuff, so it is a lot of staff time that goes into that, so I appreciate the recognition. I also would like to recognize, and in the following to Mr. Petrie's comment, uh, the staff at the Southern Outer Banks Water System did a fantastic job Saturday afternoon. Uh, this is the second time that Carolina Water System has failed, and our staff has been on site before they even had personnel on the ground. Uh, our staff had made, assessed the situation, reported it back, uh, and we actually had the fix in place before their folks even arrived. Um, would like to provide some information, though, there, there seems to be, or there is, uh, not seems to be, there is a, a tremendous amount of confusion that has occurred, uh, based on the boil water advisory, uh, which is again, just another example of the incompetence of Carolina Water to handle, uh, the permit required of their system, but the state does require that when a utility loses pressure, uh, they do have to post a, uh, a public boil water notice as a precautionary measure. Uh, that is imposed upon the utility, and this, this particular situation, it'd be Carolina Water. Generally, that is a twenty-four hour notice. Uh, the utility is required to pull a sample, uh, get the sample back, and assuming that a sample is fine, uh, the notice is lifted. Uh, the event occurred somewhere around four or five o'clock Saturday afternoon. Uh, the notice, which again, is not sent to Carrottock County, it's sent directly to the utility, it's their responsibility notifying the public. Uh, the phone calls I got Sunday morning, and I think Commissioner Etheridge got, I'm not sure what system they used, but they ended up calling people in Corova and the Carrottock Club, and certainly people way outside their area, uh, which added to the confusion of who was under and who wasn't. Uh, we have a working lab at the Southern, at Southern Outer Banks Water System. We have the ability to take a sample and test it. Uh, they're aware of this, they've used us before, uh, for reasons unknown to us. Uh, the sample that should've been pulled Saturday night when their system came back online, uh, they did not pull that sample until this after, or actually, this morning, so a notice that could've been extinguished in twenty-four hours, uh, at least will not be extinguished until tomorrow, so there's about five days of additional, uh, four additional days that had to be done, uh, for no other reason than, uh, the way that system operates. So, uh, we have called the Utilities Commission first thing this morning, the county attorney and I did.